The back end county board issue for orders to order if everyone will stand for pledge allegiance to the movement.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Right, the adoption of agenda.
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we adopted the agenda. All 28 pages is presented.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is the superintendent here?
She is not. She placed her reports, sent her reports to me and they are on the board.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So, anybody on the school report other than, who sent a report online?
Yes, she learned that she was enjoying vacation right now. Her report is attached and provided with the meeting materials. She welcomes your questions at length.
All right, then we move into the presentation from Mr. Massey on Family Futures.
Thank you all so much. I'm willing to appear, because I'm going to not take much of your time, because you guys got a lot more important stuff to do. I saw the looks of that agenda, and I saw Mr. Parrish had a really small bottle of water he's not going to make. Somebody's going to run water for him before the day's over. Yeah, he might need one more. Anyway, my name's Tom Massey. I'm currently serving as Chair of the organization called Family Futures. And for those at this table, and certainly those in the room who don't know, we are a 501(c)(3) started here in Rappahannock County in 2019. Our, we have a goal of trying to improve financial literacy at the, in school-aged children. And have kind of a, we're doing it through child savings accounts that we have adopted every kid, I guess adopted is the right word, in Rappahannock County public schools. Every kindergartner, we provide a savings account for. And it's custodial account, we hold the other half of, and they get $100 deposit as kindergartners. And they have the opportunity through that year to earn, not give, but earn incentive deposits. They can earn up to another $100 in that first year. We've arranged with our banking partner to have them receive 4% interest on that money up to the first thousand. And so that gets them into whatever grade, depending on how many incentives they've earned. And every year they're in school, they can earn another $100, $20 at a time. And we have various benchmarks or things we're looking at depending on a kindergarten kid versus a first aid grade kid. And right now, we only have two grades. We have the kindergarten and the first grade class. And even in a year with COVID, I'm absolutely stunned that we have just shy of $30,000 in savings for those kids in a crazy short period of time. Those kids are really engaged. And obviously when the kids came back to school full-time, we picked up some steam. But we have a financial coach in our, in the school that works with the kids in various classes and presents topics and works back with the teachers, trying to improve things at a kindergarten level or at a first grade level. And as we move through curriculum, my, the goal is to have high school kids, at present, we have high school kids that get a financial, personal finance class in 11th grade. Our thought is that maybe that class will be very basic to them by the time they're there, if these kids have come through from kindergarten. And they've been learning basic financial principles of savings, delayed gratification, and wants versus needs, and things of that nature. And particularly, I think we found a little bit of extra wind through COVID, because we, a lot of kids started working. And particularly middle school kids and high school kids, and trying to talk to them about, well, what do you do with this money? How does that work? And we've, the other side that we do is an adult education piece, largely trying to work with the parents. And one of the ways the kids can earn incentives is if their parents attend a seminar on college savings. Everything from college savings, home mortgage finance, car loan, credit card debt, whatever. Because we know that if we just teach the kids a few days a week in the school, and the parents teach something else the rest of the time, we don't gain a lot of ground, we may not help the kids as much. So our hope is to have parents engage on the backside of this. And really, the child savings account is kind of a carrot on a stick, and not a bad carrot. So the idea is when these kids graduate from high school, they'll have access to this money. Not before, not their parents, nobody. And they'll have $1,400 or $1,500 when they graduate, assuming they're fully funded through. And if they would come to us with a plan on how they're going to use that money, it's their money. And hopefully, the money is nice, but what they've learned is hopefully worth a ton more. And at least that's our plan. Right now, we're all just funded with private money. We are, there's about 30 few of these in the country, 32 for whatever the number might be. We are the only one in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and by far and away the youngest in the country, and by far and away the smallest. And kind of cool here, because we can adopt the entire school district, not one grade, not one class, not one school, every kid in the public school in an entire county. So I don't know if we can make a difference, but if we can, we ought to be able to see it here. At least that's, that's kind of my vision. And if that's, we have other little arms that have shown up through COVID as far as financial coaching to families, which we had more than 30 families come to us over the course of the year, looking for financial questions. Not, not like financial advisor, investment stuff, but what do I do? I lost my job and I owe this, this, and this, this month. How do I handle this? Prioritizing debt and that sort of thing. And Yeoman is here, and she's our executive director, and she's certified in that arena. So she's just, these families are coming. And my, I listened to 30 families that came in to talk to her. That's how many raised their hands and said, I need help. God knows how many were there. I don't have any idea. But it's, if you have any questions, happy to entertain. We've left, I left a little, kind of a one-page State of the Union sort of thing of our organization. And we are working very close in hand with superintendent and profile of graduate programs and all of that, and trying to kind of mesh in and be an accessory to the teachers and a resource to the teachers, not steering or directing or any of that. Just trying to, trying to help, maybe longer term. And maybe give a reason for kids to learn math.
Any comments or questions?
I think it's a wonderful idea. I had heard a little bit about it. I didn't know this much about it. I really appreciate you coming.
Certainly. Appreciate you having me. And I, I started thinking, I said, golly, if you, as you're traveling around with your constituents, and you see a first grader or somebody about that age, ask them. Here, I'd love, and if you hear something that's bad or good, yeah, throw it back at us. I'd love to hear, because you may hear it before I will. But in my travels around the big paths of the county, I run across a few, and I ask the question. And it's mostly pretty interesting. And, and the parents have been a little bit surprised that the kids are learning something, as much as they are. There's a few folks that have been a little upset, because items in their kitchen have been stolen and price tags placed, and things of that nature, and they must go buy them back. But that's okay.
Yes.
Dr. Massey, I recently opened for my children something called a green light account. And I don't know if any of you have come across that, but it's, it's basically a financial literacy tool. We're paying, paying our children an allowance for completing chores. It, it funds it from our account. And then in there, there's an option for an investment account.
Oh, wow.
It allows for fractional share ownership in companies. So for example, my son immediately wanted to invest in John Deere, because it's a company he's interested in, and he likes tractors and all that stuff. So my question is, is there, is there any, anything contemplated that would go in that direction, where you would expand the financial literacy discussion to include investment and, and sort of investment discipline, and, and giving students the option to use some small portion of their custodial accounts to, to invest? Or is that, is that way too far afield from your mission?
Well, not really. The latter part of your question might be, we'd have to do some changes to pull money out of that account.
Yeah, right.
As far as investing, things, we're looking at opportunities and are producing some opportunities at the middle school and high school level. We can't do the accounts for them right now.
Right.
We don't, we don't, aren't funded ones, and just grab all of them. But we're trying to bring education to those folks, too. So we are working now with, maybe working on putting back a, a business club or entrepreneurship club, an investment club back within the school, where there used to be the FBLA and stuff when I was a kid, and that's now not there. And, and basically teaching kids, the same thing, your, the, the education.
Right.
They may have, and whether we would, whether it be mock funds.
Yeah.
Real funds, that's been discussed as well.
Okay.
But the idea is, yes, other ways to earn money besides sweat on your brow.
Right.
And so, yes, it's being discussed. It is, we have found a fairly large need and desire within our board to do lots of things, particularly in COVID, because we sound, see a lot of these holes. And we run the risk of being an inch thick and a mile wide. So we're trying, trying to rein ourselves in, because we bring these huge ideas, and they sound like yours is awesome. And I think that's the place to put it. You know, middle school coming into high school.
Yeah.
Be a great place for that. And you're starting earlier than that even. But I think that's definitely part of our thought on curriculum, or our thoughts on what we maybe ought to learn. Curriculum is probably a too strong word. As we move into that middle school to high school realm, that's definitely got to be the conversation.
And then last two questions quickly. Have other localities within the Commonwealth caught on to the early success of your program and approached you about maybe replicating what you've done here?
We've certainly thought about it, thinking about neighboring counties. You have a lot of the same problem, same issue. There's been discussions in other counties about, hey, we'd like to maybe start something like this. To my knowledge, somebody speak if they know differently, there's nothing set up. But we were, we've, you know, we've thought about, we've consulted with some of those folks, met with them to kind of talk about some of our process, the infrastructure we've got in place, and things we've, hurdles we've found. So I believe there may be more in time. But really, it's kind of crazy. There's only 30 few in the United States.
That's amazing.
And it's kind of interesting that little Rappahannock County has the only one in the Commonwealth. So I think it's, it's pretty, pretty great.
Really cool.
I'm, I'm pretty excited about it.
And then how would citizens, my last question is how, if, if citizens wanted to contribute private funds to keep this going and strengthen it, how did, how do we do that?
It's very easy. I'll, I'll take a check today.
Okay.
But, or cash, or, that son of yours sounds pretty good. But, yes, so we can, we're a 501(c)(3), so it's everything from a check. We've done things, we give local, we've done different things. But some folks have just sent us just a check to our address.
Okay.
Some have, I know we'll send you back your forms. We are in the position where we can accept stock transfers to avoid capital gains, if folks are dealing with that sort of thing. So that's kind of where we are now. I don't know if that adequately answered your question.
Sure. And, and I assume you don't, there's no, there's no minimum for what you accept?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And, no, really, we, and I, I say that in honesty, because the night, the cool thing about here is $100 will, will take a kid a long way.
Yep.
$5,500 sponsors the entire kindergarten class.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, it's pretty cool that you can make a big move. Not that $5,500 is no money, but we're looking at 55 to 60 kids.
Wow.
And that's the whole grade sponsored for a year. But you can put an incentive on a, on a kid for a year, $400. So that's nice. It's nice.
Thanks a lot.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the executive director has a token.
Awesome. I think I saw the excitement on the children's faces when they got their first little piggy.
That's right.
First, that's not real.
Who was going to do the Ferrari or the Lamborghini or something? Yeah, no, I'm going to, you had a, you had a young one that wanted to do that.
Thank you.
Want to follow his progress.
That's neat. Thanks a lot, Ann.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
You can't get mine.
We'll be fighting over those all evening. All right, and thank you for that. And next we have a gentleman from Elfrid Harris.
Yes, Scott Tangeman, Director of Public Safety Programs is here, as well as Chuck Spruill, whose title I don't know exactly. There you go. County Manager for the Commonwealth of Virginia. I've asked Harris representatives to come here to speak with the board and give you some input on the system of where we are and where we're going. And of course, the board members would have an opportunity to ask questions. So Scott, if you would.
Yes, yeah, thank you again. My name's Scott Tangeman. I'm Director of Public Safety Programs for Elfrid Harris, which means I've got responsibility for all of our invitations nationwide. So happy to be here to answer whatever questions you guys have. My, I guess, lead up to what I've heard from my team as of recently is, obviously, we've had some challenges and whatnot, like every program we have. There's always some sort of challenges, right? And as I always tell every customer, it's not about the challenges, it's just about the, you know, partnership that we have with our customers to figure out how to mitigate and minimize or resolve those challenges. And where we're at currently, I do believe that we'll be in a position within the next 30 to 45 days to start a 30-day burn-in. So we'll have all of our issues sort of resolved by then. And then that sort of leads to, for those that don't know, when we do that 30-day burn-in, it's like, okay, the system's running, is it working properly? Do we have any issues? If there's any major issues or whatnot, then the clock sort of restarts. But, so this is to help give our customers confidence that at the end of that, yes, the system is working as it was promised. We've already, you know, signed up on all the acceptance documentation and whatnot. We're ready to turn over the system. We're ready for, you know, live users, live traffic and everything to be able to move forward and not have any problems. So again, I, I believe the last, I think we were targeted like in May or some timeframe of that for the 30-day burn-in, and it's kind of pushed, due some other issues and whatnot. So, but from the direct, trajectory I see right now for all the issues that I'm aware of, we should be in that position again by mid-August to move forward. Questions for me?
What are, I mean, how do you, how do you just describe in a nutshell for, for the public what's going on? I mean, what are the problems? What are the challenges? What have we been experiencing? Because certainly, a lot of people see it here are not privy to the discussions within the fire and rescue community. So maybe you could just itemize for us what you think the, the primary challenges are with the system we have in place, and then what, what you're going to do to mitigate, as you said, any, any downside effect of those, those challenges on, on our system's ability to operate efficiently and safely.
Yeah, so a, a big issue that I, we've been working through recently has to do with some power issues, UPS issues and whatnot. And we have some effort that's going to start correcting that later this week, and then into next week as well. We also have some concerns around grounding at the sites. We have one of our grounding experts that is coming out as well on Thursday. She's going to go through all the sites, through probably up until Mon, until Monday as well. She doesn't feel she can get it all done within the, you know, two-day period of Thursday and Friday. So she'll be back. And, and she's out of Lynchburg, Virginia, which for those that don't know is where our division is headquartered out of. So obviously, we've got a lot of support not that far away. And there was some issues with some mics, which I think we've got that resolved. And there's a paging issue that I'm not entirely 100% up to speed on, that we're trying to work through. And I think there is a software firmware upgrade that we're also doing as well to correct some other miscellaneous issues. So those are some of the major ones that I'm aware of, that we're talking about on a, you know, sort of a daily basis internally, and then weekly as well with the customer.
Are you confident right now, today, that we are, are not facing life and safety risk vis a vis any of these problems within the, within the paging system in particular, and the communication system in general? I mean, are, can we say confidently that, that our citizens are safe and not at risk as a result of any of these problems?
From my perspective, I am unaware of any issues that would cause a problem in that. But, and there's always the but.
Right.
That, you, you don't know what you don't know.
Right.
So.
Okay. Yeah, because, I mean, I, I have heard some real acute problems with the paging system, where pages can't be heard, even, even on repeat. We, at our last meeting, we, we had one person from Chester Gap play some of the recorded pages that were virtually unintelligible. And, and that's one thing certainly that I can latch on to, as a layperson to say that, that ain't right, and we got to fix that. I mean, that can't be good.
Right. Yeah, and, and, you know, with apologies, you know, this whole thing with the, the paging is something that I was not, as I stated, not as familiar with. So as soon as I walk out of here and actually can get coverage again on the phone, I'll go ahead, try to find out what's going on there.
Speaking of challenges, right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I, I was notified just before I got to the meeting that, you know, Amosville Company 3, the furthest east of here, they're not getting calls, they're missing calls, they're saying things, the transmissions on the pagers are just garbled. So as of today, 12 noon, it's, they can't use them at all. They don't use them. They don't rely on them.
Okay.
So we do have a life safety issue when the volunteers don't get the calls as of 12 today.
I appreciate that input. I was not aware of that. And that's, and Chuck to, to take a note. And again, as soon as I'm out of here and can get coverage again, we will.
It's essentially the same complaint that we had on June 1st when we all met down at Amosville. So it hasn't changed in a month.
Has not changed in a month.
Yeah. So I will say in the slight defense of Mr. Tangeman, that he's pinch hitting for the project manager who's on vacation this week, who is very aware of these issues, as is our service rep on the service side. But perhaps it's a wildfire, if you will.
Yes.
That goes with the job title. And unfortunately, too, it's like, the project manager we have is a new project manager, because the previous project manager retired as well. So can't kind of control that. So, you know, he, this individual will also come up to speed as best as possible in the short timeframe that we have.
We would appreciate anything you can do.
Absolutely. Well, Chuck, our account manager, he did reach out to me, I want to say a week or two ago, to ask me to kind of step in and help navigate that. Again, as part of my role and responsibilities, and we do have issues like that, is, you know, I'm the one that can actually get the resources we need to resolve whatever issues we have.
I, I mean, I hope so. I hope you all know that, that we made a choice to go with you. We had choices to make for the service that we could select, and we selected you. And it was, it was not a unanimous decision. There were people that encouraged us to go with other providers. And so I really hope you will provide the service that we selected you to do in a way that we selected you to deliver it.
Well, I appreciate that you guys did select us. And I will tell you that my commitment is that we will resolve those and give you the system. But, you know, not only you will be proud of it, we're going to be equally proud of it.
I hope so. I hope so. Because a lot, a lot now I hear, well, we told you, you should have gone with, and you can probably guess who they filled the blank with.
I used to work there, so.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, we're taking a lot of heat for things that we're counting on you to deliver. And I hope you understand that. I don't mean to be pointed about it, but we need you to do your job, because we need to do ours.
No, absolutely.
Fire and Rescue needs to do theirs.
Absolutely.
And we have a chief here, Chief Bankston from Company 1. And I would, I would like, Madam Chairman, I know he's attending specifically for that reason, if he has any concerns that he'd like to address. And I see Mr. Polster in the back of the room who's been cataloging issues, and I would defer to him, you know, for what's currently, the problems with, with the system.
Chris, do you have, before we go to Mr. Banks, do you have anything?
I don't know.
Okay. Jonathan, would you like to be heard from a standpoint of your company?
Oh, just paging wise, I know that the.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Paging wise, since they've done the testing, it has gotten better, at least in our first due. We still have some members that are, we understand that we, we paid for 91% coverage. So some of the members are in that map that I believe either Sean Polster gave, or Mr. Curry gave us. So we, we understand that. But I know certain places up in Givern Hallaway in our first due, that it has gotten better for my members, that they could actually understand a little bit better. So the, the paging system has, has gotten better. But it's an 800 system, and we don't have any radio towers in the county. So we're relying off other towers outside the county. And we have hills, valley, you know, valleys, things like that, where we, we kind of understand. But it is a, a life safety issue for, for us. When I was on a fire, where we didn't have communication. At work in Falkir County, where we have towers, and my officer had to break out the window, pull his regulator off, and talk to me out the window face to face while I was pumping, to tell us what was going on inside that structure, because they couldn't talk or, and work like that. So it's not just us having issues. The, the other counties have had issues, too. But we have those, the forms that we have in the county that we, we documented all those on. So the paging has, has gotten somewhat better, at least in my first due, I know of. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks. Thanks for.
Thanks, Chief Bankston.
I can tell you that my district goes up to Chester Gap. And I was at Suddles, which you go 522 north. I was there this morning, and I've been wearing the pager for probably a year now. And all I could hear was Company 4. That was all I could understand through the static. And when I got about a mile closer to Massey's corner, I could start understanding that Company 3 was involved and Company 4 was going. And then when I got to 522, it was much better. So I know Mr. Curry's been working hard to try to figure out if the north needs some sort of tower or something to, to get the signal better up there. But I think part of this is also understanding exactly what we bought. And I'm not sure, as far as I'm concerned, that I understand clearly, because I don't think we paid for clear transmission every single time. And to be able to articulate and explain to the citizens and the fire and rescue volunteers, I think they need to understand what we paid for as well.
Yes. And, and I'm sure in our proposal, and then even with our coverage testing that, that we've done. So as you noted, in order to get, I mean, not even with a cell phone, right? You don't get 100% coverage everywhere you, you go, right? Obviously, as I stated, I can't get coverage right here with either of my phones that are on two different providers. So, and, and the reason that is, is just the cost, right? The cost associated with trying to just get ubiquitous coverage 100% of the time, cluster clearies is just, is just not there. So, but one of the things we do is, you know, we'll propose and say, this is what we can guarantee. And we have provided a guarantee to the county. And what we're incumbent on doing is making sure we meet that guarantee. And in that coverage map, you can see where you should have great coverage, where you may have spotty coverage. And that spotty coverage is, you know, part of what you were indicating, that the known areas where we have, will be somewhat suspect. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure we've already provided those maps. Those maps are available. And, you know, if we're not meeting our guarantee, we'll do everything we can to meet our guarantee.
Yeah. And so where we are right now, as I noted earlier when we spoke, is that we're trying to get the system to work as it's supposed to for those coverage areas, and then begin the conversation about how do we expand to other areas, if that's what the board wants to invest in. And they've indicated that they do, but we need to make sure the system's doing what it's supposed to do before we can figure out how do you plug the holes.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. And we don't go away until we've met our coverage guarantees and passed all of our tests. So.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Do appreciate you being here. And hopefully in August, we will be able to celebrate a successful 30 days.
You know, I'll come back in August. I'm from Phoenix, Arizona. I'm not sure what everyone's talking about heat here, so.
So if, if I could, you, you will be back at the August meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That would be great to give us an update.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
And I would just, I would just add, in August, it would be helpful to succinctly summarize specifically the technical challenges that you have had to address, and then the status of each, how it's been addressed, and if there are remaining problems, what are those remaining problems, and what is the timeline for remedying, anything that remains unsolved or unfixed?
Right. My, obviously, my desire is from your desire, that by then, all the issues are resolved.
Yeah. But I think it'd be helpful to, to present it that way.
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll come with a much more prepared list.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make sure the board is aware, Mr. Polster and I participate in a weekly conference call with the Harris team, implementation, and a bi-weekly conference call on the maintenance side of things. And we've not been bashful on those calls to make sure Harris knows our concerns.
Yeah.
And the ticketing system that's been established, that seems useful for documenting issues?
Absolutely. And Mr. Polster, I mean, the second day he was here, put in a, a form system where each of the chiefs have access and can put in trouble tickets.
Right.
And those trouble tickets are then made available to the maintenance side of Harris to review, and then branched over, I guess, to the implementation side if needed.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment. Open up public comment. If you'd like to speak, just please come up to the mic, let us know which district you're in and your name, and we'll keep it to five minutes or less, please.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruth Welch. I live in Castleton in Stonewall Hawthorne District. And I'd like to comment on a couple agenda items today under H, New Business. The first is number three, broadband authority administration funding. And the second is recognition of citizens serving on board-appointed groups. I wholeheartedly support the BOS approval of a matching $50,000, $50,000 from CARES funds to match the PATH Foundation's pledge of 50,000, and anonymous donors' pledge of 50,000 for broadband. Since moving to Rappahannock County five years ago when we retired, I was astounded that the community and the county did not take advantage of PATH and other charitable foundations' funding for county government and nonprofit organizations. Even Falkir County has received $100,000 grant from PATH for their broadband efforts. And I truly believe that Rappahannock would be missing an opportunity for the safety and security of our residents if we do not approve the use of the $50,000, which I understand we already have from CARES, if I'm not mistaken. The second issue is I support the recognition of volunteer citizens who serve on many of the local boards that help keep our county efficiently operating with little burden for the taxpayers of Rappahannock. However, I think that this draft policy and procedure should be amended in Section 811.3 to read at the completion of at least four years of continuous service, rather than eight years. Now, I don't know if there's a legal reason for that. But I know that we have many, the board terms are normally four years. And I know personally that I serve on the Recreation, RCRFA. And two of our retiring members, Chair Michael DeGrosso and member Bruce Hutchinson, are ending their terms of four years. And I know they've spent many, many hours, you know, blood, sweat, and tears, literally, out in the park, cleaning up invasives, doing the trails, planting native plants, writing grants. And I know if you have looked at the county park, we've made a lot of improvements in the last four years. And I do really think that we should change the years to four instead of eight on the draft approval, on this draft procedure. Again, just my personal opinion, because I know I've spent many, many hours in the park and at meetings. So I'd appreciate your considerations for this. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good comment.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Board members. Deke Deacon's Hampton District. On item H3 about the broadband authority administration funding, I just want to be reassured that no taxpayer funds would be involved. This board sat here and told us in a public hearing that under no circumstances would taxpayer funds be involved. I just want to have that reassurance. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Any else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is just a brief note. A couple weeks ago, there was a really great article about the survey that had been conducted.
Named district?
Oh, sorry. Sheila Gressenter, Hampton District. Did I? Okay. Okay. Back to start.
We know each other.
I know.
I didn't recognize.
For the record.
The people I zoomed on.
Okay. For the record. All right, I read it. Couple weeks ago, the Rappahannock News had a really great article reporting on the results of the survey that had been conducted for the library. And I thought it was very important. The one thing that did grab my attention was that there had not been much participation from teenagers. So Judy Disarno, however, had had a focus group ahead of time, as, as she did. They did focus groups for various groups around the county to try to get some questions for the survey. Anyway, when she was talking to the teens, they didn't really use the library because they didn't feel that they had, that it was a place for them to gather. And they also said that they really didn't have a place in the county as, as a place. What they really talked about is there are no place in this county for them. They really talked about wanting a place to study together with the groups. The library is hoping to create a space where teens can study together, socialize, have possibly weekly game and movie nights. And I, I want you all to think about the importance of that, because the youth are the important part of our county. They're the future of our county. We want to be able to have them going through their teenage years as, as an enjoyable part of this county. And I think the library can be a very important asset in that. And I think that's very important. The whole crux of what I've always been saying is the importance of people being able to live here, families to live here. And so that brings up the affordable housing, which I've also touched on. Affordable housing, a lot of people don't seem to have gotten, is in our comprehensive plan, it says it's the need of all the residents of various degrees of their income. So it's not just one type of affordable housing that we're looking for. We're looking for a whole range of housing. And I think an organization that really demonstrates that is raprenters.org. That has only been in existence for about the past couple of years. And they have a constantly changing list of people who are looking for houses. Just recently, they actually put out a feeler for how about having people on the list who are looking to move into this county. And there was a bit of a pushback. And the pushback was, there aren't enough rental houses for our people living in Rappahannock right now. Why do we want other people to have that opportunity? Which gives you an idea that, yes, we do need housing here. And affordable housing, rentals, and we do have that opportunity now, hopefully coming to fruition in Little Washington. And then there are other places in the county I've heard, oh, there are buildable lots everywhere. Okay. Then why hasn't some enterprising Realtor glommed onto that and, and actually pushed forth a plan to do that? I really haven't seen any. So that's, I just think our kids are very important, and I want to have a place for them to live and enjoy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Anyone else in the courtroom?
Madam Chairman, I see that there's two people that are here that are possible appointees today. Would this be their only opportunity to speak today, or will they have the opportunity during the times to make the appointments to speak?
Whatever the board wants.
Yeah. I guess it would depend on if they're here, we could let them speak now.
Okay.
During public comment, and that would make sense. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Doug Elkins. I'm from the Piedmont District. It was suggested to me to come here this evening and let you know a little bit about myself and who I am, because I've been told that a lot of people have been asking, who is this guy? So I wasn't born and raised in Rappahannock, but I was born and raised in Culpeper County next to us. After graduation, I joined the US Army, spent tenure commitment with them, and was honorably discharged, and we put that first. And after that, I went to work for a very good company, of which I retired in 2012. I bought a house in Rappahannock in 2007 in Sperryville, which I still live. And I went to work, after retirement in 2012, I went to work at Communication Corporation of America down in Boston for five years until tragic fire burnt that business down, and he had to relocate. So I moved on. So since then, I just do pretty much handyman work in construction and different types of things. But anyway, I'm still here in the county, and I think it's time for me to help, you know, help my county do what they need help in, because I'm retired now, and I have some knowledge on some things. So, and with that, I've filled out the application for two chairs on a couple boards here. So just wanted to come here this evening, let everybody know who I am. And I'm willing to do some work. So with that, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thanks for stepping up.
Thank you.
Hi, it's me again. I didn't know I was supposed to speak about this. Ruth Welch, again, Stonewall Hawthorne District from Castleton. And I've been serving on the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority, RCRFA, for the last few years. And I did fill out the application. Let's see if I can read it here. I got some right here. I've, I've tried to lead the effort of RCRFA to make the Rappahannock County Park environmentally sustainable, beautiful, and a safe outdoor space for county residents to get fresh air and exercise. The empty parking lot is now full of cars, and the park is full of children and families. I'm a certified Old Red Master naturalist, the RCRFA FOIA officer, the RCRFA secretary of 2017 to 19, grant holder and founder of the Rappahannock County Park Foundation of 501(c)(3), so donors can get a tax deductible donation. And I have about two pages of accomplishments that we've done in the last three years, including receiving both myself and a couple other members, $102,000 of grants, setting up the, the new 501(c)(3). We've received about $20,000 worth of grants. We haven't spent it all yet. So we've also had a whole list of, laundry list of other efforts that we've done to make the park more usable for the community. So, and if you ever drive by the park, I think you'll notice how we have beautiful native pollinator gardens, and my hands are very dirty working in the dirt. We have monthly workdays. So if you want us to continue some of this work, I know we have a good board. Robert over there is one of our new members, and he's now serving as temporary chair of the board. So I'd appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thanks for all you've done. Thank you.
All right. I see we have some folks on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? Please raise your Zoom hand and let us know. All right. I'm not seeing anyone. Thank you very much. I'll close public comment. And we'll move into the consent agenda, which is minutes for adoption is the first item. Is there anything anybody wants to pull from the consent agenda?
I'll move, Madam Chairman, to adopt the consent agenda as presented, and the details therein.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. We're into accounts payable.
We're moving on.
So did I turn wrong?
Rec. Oh, that's right.
We'll just breeze through all those consent items.
Item F1, I guess I can give an introduction.
Thank you.
As the board is aware, I prepared an agenda item at your last meeting, and I believe the one before that, to make sure the board was aware of the upcoming expiring terms on the rec authority. Members serve for four years. You have five vacancies on that authority based on the expiration of their terms. From those, you can see attached to this agenda item, there are three applications that came in, two applications for reappointment from Ms. Welch and Ms. McCool, and then one application for appointment from Mr. Elkins, who just spoke to you. Of course, Ms. Welch just spoke to you as well. Your ordinance states that appointments to this authority board must be by resolution, and there is a resolution prepared there for you with several blanks that can be filled in with the names that you desire. I did receive a question earlier this week or last week on whether more than one board of supervisor member could be appointed to this authority. And the wording of our ordinance is a little muddy, but after speaking with county attorney, we do believe that you could. One, one would have to be for a four-year term, while the other would be appointed at your organizational meeting. So you just need to be clear on if you take that route. And of course, staff could be appointed as well. I'm not advocating for that personally. And that staff would have a four-year term as well, the way the wording is written.
Madam Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we reappoint Missy McCool to the Rec. Recreation, Rappahannock County Recreation Facilities Authority Board for a four-year term.
So ultimately, you will have to adopt the resolution. So if you can establish a slate to be placed in that resolution, or move that the resolution be adopted multiple times with different names, we can do that too.
I think we should. I think we should go name by name.
That's fine. We just need to do it by resolution. So your.
So that's my motion to reappoint Ms. McCool.
And I would also be in favor of including her name on the slate. She's a great member. She works really hard. She's always productive at the meetings, very personable. And she's a really good team member on that authority.
Is a second?
Yes.
I'd like to place Mr. Doug Elkins' name in consideration for appointment on that slate.
And I would like to second that as well. I really appreciate Mr. Elkins putting his name forward. It gives us a second representative from the Piedmont District on the authority. And I know it isn't a bi-district authority, but it's always nice to have everybody represented and have, have some one or two from each district. And so I really do appreciate you putting your name forward. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and nominate Ruth Welch. She's done a lot for the board and got experience there. So hopefully she's, I'm glad she's willing to continue.
All right. So are we doing the slate with the names presented?
So I, I heard a motion for, and a second for McCool and Elkin. I heard a motion for Welch. I've not heard a second. And I gather that this is to place her name on to the resolution for a vote.
That's correct. I mean, that's as I understand it.
So one way you could handle that, you could take a vote to adopt the resolution with McCool and Elkin. You can revisit additional names if you'd like, and you could adopt the resolution in copies.
So that leaves, that would leave, there are five current expiring terms, correct?
Correct.
I, I was the one that asked the question about if another board member could serve. I know, Mr. Parrish, you're always very interested in the park. And I know, Mr. Whitson, it's in your district. I don't know if either of you have any, you know, taste to serve on that authority in addition to everything you already do for the board. But it's a busy authority, and we can, you know, see if we can catch a few more people in the next week, or in the next month before the next meeting. But.
I'd, I'd be willing to, I mean, I don't know if there's any way to, I am concerned that there are a number of open seats. I'd be happy to serve temporarily at the pleasure of the board, or I don't know if that's possible. I will say, Ms. Smith, I appreciate you, you stepping up to the board. And I continue to be involved sort of tangentially in dealing with law enforcement issues primarily, which seem to be recurring. So if, if it would be helpful, I'd be happy to, to attend meetings, participate, and contribute. I just don't know that I want to stand in the way of a citizen's seat that would be for four years. And I just want to set reasonable expectations. But I'd be happy to contribute if there is a mechanism for me to do that.
I think it would be great if you're willing to do it. And I certainly think it's reasonable that if you take up the seat for a while while we're waiting for other folks to make an application, certainly you could, and should, put in your resignation when we get another applicant.
Okay.
Or maybe, maybe you could. Certainly, if you wanted to, put in your resignation.
As long as I'm honorably discharged as a citizen.
I just wonder what the breakdown by district is, you know, currently.
Yeah.
I kind of lost track of it.
I think we've had the discussion where it didn't have to be by district, didn't we?
No, but it would, it's nice to have these different bodies have some sort of cross-sectional representation in the county.
Well, Mr. Van Eckers Stonewall Hawthorne, Mr. Yow is Piedmont. Ms. Beers is. Is Stonewall Hawthorne.
I, I think it's incumbent upon me to try to find somebody from Jackson. I, I think it's incumbent upon me to try to find somebody from Jackson.
Yeah. So I could, I guess, I'm a Hampton District citizen, so arguably Mike Del Grosso, who's stepping down, I could be the Hampton District, another Hampton District person for a while until we find a citizen.
We do have new people moving into, or that have moved into the Wakefield District, so maybe I can-
Yeah.
-um, find someone that would be interested to as, as well.
It would be really great. There's a couple of things going on at R C R F A now that I, I just feel there's people that maybe use this park a lot or are involved in events, particularly the fodder stack race and the use of the tennis courts, which are always-
Yeah.
-big items for discussion on the agendas and, and major concerns of the park, but those groups don't have any representation on the board. So if folks that are, that love tennis or love the fodder stack race want to get involved, um, your, your, your participation is requested and sorely needed on the R C R F A, so.
And I should mention that during the pandemic, there, I've already met a handful of young families that have moved into the county who clearly would be direct beneficiaries of all the good work that Ms. Welch and others have done at the park. And perhaps we could tap into some of those. I know a number of families in Stonewall Hawthorne District in particular come to mind. Um, so it would be good to, to get the word out and see if we can't get some, some other volunteers. But anyway, I'm happy to, happy to step in.
Do we need a second for Mr. Whitson as well?
I guess that's a-
Well, I didn't, I didn't move to put, appoint myself, so I think you got it.
I think Ms. Smith sorted it.
I thi- I think I started it, so that was my motion.
And Ms. Eldridge's term was very short, and she was just appointed, and it is up. I did not receive an application for reappointment. I believe she probably wants to be reappointed and-
I received an email from her and she did not.
Okay.
If you need a second for Mr., uh, Whitson to be a temporary appointment, I'll make that.
I'll just, I think the way to, a thank you. So perhaps I could fulfill the, the expiring term, Mr. Del Grosso, until someone is appointed later. I don't know if we have to articulate that, but.
Yeah. According to the ordinance, you'll be appointed to a four-year term like anybody else, and then you will have the ability to resign-
Okay.
-when it's appropriate. So just to summarize, what I believe I've heard to this point is that there was a motion and second for Ms. McCool, Mr. Elkin, uh, and Mr. Whitson, uh, whose, whose names would go into the resolution as provided, and that would leave two seats remaining to be filled, and then Mr. Whitson's seat to be filled at some point in time as well.
Yeah. I think that's right.
And I think it is good to recognize that if, if some folks in particular from Wakefield or Stonewall, not Stonewall, or in Jackson District, um, would be willing to come forward, you know, it's really, it is good to have representation countywide.
Right. So we have the list.
So with, with those names in, entered into the resolution, I would need somebody to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I so move.
Second.
A motion by Ms., a second by Mr. Whitson. Any further discussion?
I would just also add that I hope we, uh, recognize, uh, the officers that are stepping aside and, uh, the other volunteers that have served, um, whose terms are expiring. I hope we will recognize them at our next-
I hope so too.
-board meeting. They have done a great job, no doubt, and will be sorely missed.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call, please.
Oh, roll call. Mr. Fraser.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Whitson.
Aye.
Mr. Parrish.
Aye.
And aye also. Next appointment to the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority is for August. I don't know if we, did we get any?
That is just a preliminary item to draw the attention to the board. Um, these are, these appointments are set by, scheduled set by the ordinance, and they expire on July 31st. I've made it the, uh, two members of the Water and Sewer Authority, uh, whose terms are ending on July 31st this year, Mr. Haley and Mr. Sharp know that their terms are expiring, that they could complete an application for appointment. And just noting here that I intend to place notice in the newspaper for two weeks as your policy requires unless that is waived. And I, I don't see any reason to, why you would waive it in this situation.
One thing I would like to, to say on this front, um, having, as the pandemic's winding down, having now been attending regular Washington Town Council meetings, and I'm sure we've all read about it in the paper, Town of Washington continues to struggle financially with their, both their wastewater treatment and, and water systems. And one point I've made on several occasions to the Town Council is that in addition to trying to find more revenue to cover, cover their gap and operate a break even system or systems, including wastewater treatment and water, um, they need to think beyond some, uh, only generating more revenue, but also reducing costs. And to that end, it seems to me that in a county our size with two little wastewater treatment systems, that there should be, um, at least some effort made, um, for the two systems in Sperryville and the Town of Washington to achieve economies of scale by working together. And to that end, um, I, I hope that as we, um, appoint or reappoint individuals to the Rappahannock County Water and Sewer Authority, um, while I think it is important that ratepayers within the Sperryville Service District are on that board, I also think that it would behoove us to look to add members who would have a more global view of, of wastewater treatment within, within the county, who can think about how these economies of scale might be gained to benefit all ratepayers who are on sewer systems in our county. Um, so I'd just say that as background, and it looks like next month we'll be, we'll be voting on individuals, uh, to reappoint or to add. So, thank you.
Could we approach this conditionally, Gary, that if, if, uh, Mr. Haley and Mr. Sharp wish to be reappointed, we don't advertise, if we hear from them before the advertising deadline or?
Based on your, um, I think you have the liberty to do, the board can do whatever the board wants to do. Your policy says that I will advertise unless it's the portions of the policy are waived. So the board will have to take an action to waive that portion of the policy. Otherwise, it's automatic.
I've brought this up once before, and we have, I believe, a problem with Mr. Sharp serving. I have nothing personally against Mr. Sharp, but he's serving as a member of the B Z A, and the statute specifically states that a member of the B Z A may serve on no other board or-
Public body.
Public body, right. I believe that's the language, public body in the county, except the planning commission, in which Mr. Sharp did, uh, fill that position, uh, at, at the pleasure of the board. We asked him and he, he was appointed. So I, I believe that we have a problem there.
I thought, I thought we had been through that and that we had a legal opinion on that that said it was okay.
I have never seen anything that actually ties that legal opinion to any, anything specific.
I know it goes back before my time, but I believe that the question was asked, but-
Yeah, for sure. Do we, uh, serving on, on two public bodies, one?
I think the Water and Sewer Authority and the, um, the Water and Sewer Authority being appointed by the board supervisors and the B Z A being appointed by the court, I think that was the difference, but I, I don't know. I've not read anything on that.
I think we'd be able to have some, some clarity, like, uh, you know, an A G opinion. I really do.
Oh, I mean, does anybody disagree that if we should just go ahead and advertise that there's somebody new with energy and has knowledge of this kind of system? It'd be silly not to look at them as a possibility.
I would just say that they have a lot going on at the Water Sewer Authority right now. So sometimes when you have a lot of projects going on, it's a good idea not to try to change votes midstream. There's the I N I study that they're working on for infiltration and flow. There's some rate studies that they're looking at.
I don't disagree with any of that, but I think that we need to follow the statute.
I thought we, I thought we had gotten an opinion on it, and I, I don't have it at my fingertips right now, but I thought we had visited this once before.
I know that when Ms. Ritter was appointed to the recreational, I'm sorry, to the Board of Zoning Appeals Court appointment, she stepped down from her seat on the recreational facilities authority, which would be precisely the same fact pattern that we're talking about with Mr. Sharp, B Z A on the one hand, and then an authority on the other, not sewer, but recreation. So I think we do need to nail that down, and, and I agree with Mr. Fraser. This is not to, to pick on Mr. Sharp by any means, but I think we all should be cognizant of what is allowed and not allowed and stick to it, period. And so we should get, if we already have an opinion, dust it off and make sure we're comfortable with it and fully understand it. And if we don't have one, we should get one.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
I, I recall the, the conversation, and I can, I can remember where Alex was standing and him standing up and discussing it, but I, I can't remember the crux of the matter.
Well, dust off. So the, the question is, can you serve on the, on the B Z A and a, an authority that's appointed by the board?
I think that's right. And there's some, there's some, uh, pub, you know, membership in public bodies or language. I guess that's the stat. Right. Lucky you. That sounds like a fun research question, but hopefully it's already done.
I hope so. But I'll do it instead.
Yeah.
All right. So we have time, um, to get that information.
The other point I should make is that the ordinance identifies that the current members will serve until they're replaced, even if it goes beyond their end of term in this particular body or ordinance. So, and if the board of supervisors wants to take longer than August to make an appointment, you can do that, and it won't jeopardize the membership.
Well, uh, so that's a question I meant to ask in the context of our earlier discussion on the recreational facilities authority. Is that not in the?
That is not in that ordinance.
Huh. Okay.
So if that's the case, and we want to keep Alex Sharp on there, we just don't appoint anybody else? Well, he told, he told us back there some time ago when it was brought up that he would rather, if he had his druthers, he would rather serve on the W S A than, you know, if he had a choice to make. And I, I, you know, I, I really seriously don't have a problem with him being on one or the other. I think it's the both is the issue, and we need to nail that down.
Yeah. Glad you brought it up.
All right. So we'll wait until we hear from Mr. Goff.
I'm moving forward with an advertisement based on your policy.
Yeah.
Um, unless I'm told not to do that.
You need two weeks.
I'd say, I'd say to hold off on the advertising for now, till we sort this out.
I think it's a good idea to hold off on the advertisement too.
I prefer action.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we hold off on the advertising.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Parrish, Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, agriculture and forestry districts, any time?
Uh, yes, as I alerted the board, I believe, last month that Mr. Wolman resigned because he's moving out of town. Uh, since that time, I've received an application for appointment from David Thornhill, stating that his long, um, experience in farming would make him a, an excellent candidate for this vacancy. Uh, the person only needs to be a landowner, um, but you need to have both landowners and those landowners who are engaged in agriculture and forestal production. So it's good to have more members that are involved in agriculture and forestal production as they understand the situation. And then if you lose other members in that category, you don't, you're not unbalanced.
I'll make a motion to appoint David Thornhill to that board.
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board of Building Appeals.
Just as the case, last month I alerted you to the vacancy. Did talk to an individual, provided them with a copy of the application that, uh, was not completed and returned to me. So we continue to have a vacancy, and, uh, this vacancy is rather limited in that we need to have people that, uh, are occupational or professional fields related to the construction industry. Uh, one member should be a builder, one member should be a, um, design professional, and one member should be an experienced property manager. So if you know anybody who fits that mold and could add to this board, it'd be helpful. They very rarely meet, and by that I mean not in the last three and a half years that I've been here.
All right. Any discussion?
So what, what's the current makeup of the board? We, we have, it's like we have design professionals. It's like we have builders. Uh, is, is it the property manager that we're in need of?
Yeah, and it is a should.
Okay, it's not a should.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and I think in our case, where we, we don't do property management, uh, section of the code, it's not as critical, although the last person did check both builder and property manager, which was nice. Um, so I, we'll take what we can get, I believe.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Building Committee Appointment.
Well, there is an agenda item later in the meeting to refine the Building Committee Charter. Uh, that still envisions at least two citizen members on the committee, and right now you only have, uh, one citizen member, Mr. Glennie. Ms. Stamps resigned a few months ago. Uh, Mr. Elkins, who spoke to you earlier during public comment, submitted an application, it sounded like from his, uh, his comment, that he may be a, a good fit for this committee. He's the only application that I've received at this point in time. I have not advertised this, as it's not a, um, a board that must be advertised, and the board could elect to do that if you, if you want.
Not to beat a dead horse, but is this, is the Building Committee a public body? And do we, is the legal opinion we're seeking relevant here? I, I appreciate Mr. Elkins stepping up so energetically. I just want to make-
So the, the restriction on a B Z A member serving on another body is within the portion of the code in-
Related to the B Z A.
Related to the B Z A.
Okay.
I lost track of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it would not apply in this case.
I move that we appoint Mr. Elkins to the Building Committee.
Before he changes his mind.
I'll second real quick.
We have a very quick motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, sir.
Last month, we asked to have the reassessment process timeline added to this month's agenda.
Yeah. I, I did speak with Ms. Graham earlier, and she is, uh, she didn't know if she'd be able to slip over today. She might, she was going to possibly try to track your agenda as we was moving along and, um, and, and then possibly slip over, but we discussed it. I did add some information right at the last minute here, and the board may, um, may help the discussion, um, relative to the, uh, timeline. As you recall, last month, as part of the information reports, I included Ms. Graham's, um, memo to you that laid out the timeline for the overall reassessment process. And at the very end of that process, there is a Board of Equalization that must be seated as appointed by the court, who will have the last review of the assessment, the reassessment process. Our ordinance sets in, um, very clear language in one, section 151 dash 12, the, uh, schedule for the B O E. Uh, I don't know the history behind why the dates were selected for the B O E with an application deadline of August 28th, and then, uh, them finishing the work, work on September 15th. Uh, but we, um, in the last few years have accelerated the, uh, budget, uh, development and adoption process, as well as the process by which the tax bills are sent out. And so with everything pulled forward, it enables the, um, commissioner of revenue to fix the land book earlier, which allows the entire process to happen sooner. If you were to look at, uh, her, her timeline, you'll see that, um, the reassessment assessor's hearings are scheduled to be done in November. Um, and then the B O A would not be seated per your ordinance until the following August, uh, because we, the board adopted that specific date, August 28th, however many years ago. And there's really no reason to wait that long. The Code of Virginia has some language in, um, 58-1, 3378 that links the time of, of, um, let me set the right section, links the, yeah, the, links the time of the, um, B O E when they sit relative to when the assessor- to when the assessor hearings are completed. And what the state code says is that they can't happen any sooner than 30 days after the termination of the assessor's hearings. So in discussing this with the Commissioner of Revenue this morning, she and I thought, rather than fixing a defined date in your local ordinance, you could modify your local ordinance to remove August 28th as the, the first date, and then, and change it to on the date that is 60 days after the termination of the date set by the assessing officer to hear objections to the assessments as provided in Section 58-13330 of the Code of Virginia. That would allow that deadline to float in time. If the assessor hearings are delayed from what the current projection is, it would slide it back a little bit. But 60 days would provide more cushion than the state code mandates, which is 30. And then before it suggests, the ordinance suggested that the BOE would start on the 28th and be finished on the 15th. So rather than fixing a second date, just setting a 20-day period for the BOE to sit, which is similar to the 28th to the 15th. We think that this flexibility is aligned with 58-13330 that allows you to fix a date. It just would be a more flexible schedule depending on how things go. And if the assessor can get their work done early and the citizens have their opportunity to go before the assessor and assessor hearing, then you don't have to wait many months before then the BOE is seated. If the Board of Supervisors would like to move forward with such a thing, change, then staff could put this in ordinance form, make sure all the i's and t's are consistent with county attorney's thoughts, and then advertise that for your next meeting. That's item one of two in this agenda item. The second item is one that I added just this morning, and if, if the board wants to take action on this, you may want to consider it an addenda item requiring unanimous decision. Related to the reassessment process, every reassessment cycle, the Commissioner of Revenue must revalidate land use. And there's a fee in the ordinance for this, and it's $48 per cycle. And back in June of 2015, the Board of Supervisors took action, and I'm bringing up the board docs agenda item here, on the recommendation of Mr. McCarthy to increase the annual fee from seven to 10. Well, if you look at the ordinance, it was really eight. And so the board passed a motion to increase it from eight to 10. Unfortunately, that fee is set by ordinance, so passing a motion to increase it really doesn't change the ordinance. The ordinance is still as written, and it's $48. The Commissioner of Revenue would like that changed to 60. She said, I believe, there's approximately 1,500 parcels, and of those 1,500 parcels, you, it's $60 for this revalidation. She said that it's an involved process, and she believes it's reasonable. And not only is it reasonable to the Commissioner of Revenue, apparently it was reasonable to the Board of Supervisors in 2015. But to do that, you must have a duly advertised public hearing to make your ordinance where it is currently codified in 151173, where it says a revalidation fee of $48 shall be assessed. I should say 60. So in my communication with Ms. Graham this morning, if the board is of mind to do this, you really need to do it at your next meeting, and because her notices will be going out in mid, mid-August. And so she will have to use what is in the ordinance, the $48, unless the board takes action to change it, even though the board previously in June of 2015 made a vote just to change the ordinance.
What have we been charging?
Well, I was hoping you didn't ask that, but.
Well, you know.
$10.
If it's just, if it's just cleaning up, so that everything aligns, and that's.
Have been charging $10. Arguably, you should not have been, we should not have been charged $10.
So the new ordinance, we're still going to charge $10, or we?
Correct. It would just actually have.
Just clean up.
Just clean it up, so it.
Six, it's $10 for six years, or $60.
Oh, okay. Now, by the way, does that include parcels that enjoy land use taxation, but they're in conservation easement?
I can't answer that. I, I don't know. I assume it's only for those that have to be revalidated to be, being in the land use program, but Ms. Graham would have to answer that.
Oh, yeah.
And if it applies, it.
Right, it applies.
So it's, it's, there are two different issues on the table before you. One is the schedule that she brought up earlier in her timeline, and staff's recommendation is to change our ordinance, Chapter 151, to have a flexible schedule and pin it to 60 days from when the termination of the date set by the assessing officer. That language is pulled directly out of state code. And then the second is the fee, and if the board would like staff to move forward and prepare public hearing, ordinance documents, and notices for these two items, we can do that for your next meeting.
Do you need two separate?
You don't have to have two separate. However, if it's not going to be unanimous, you may want to break it apart because the fee item really should be unanimous vote, given it was added after the board agenda was released.
Well, we should clean it up.
I, I agree.
Absolutely.
And Ms. Graham agrees.
Yeah. So do you need that in a motion?
If, if the board would like to do both.
Let's break them up.
Adjust the BOE date, you, you can do whatever you want. I just need to be clear with what it is that you want us to do.
Well, I'll make a motion. Go ahead and do both.
One second. Mr. Parrish, Ms. Smith, any further discussion to do both?
What does to do both mean?
Both would be, and it's not do both, it is advertise.
Correct.
Public hearings for the ordinance amendments to change the dates that the BOE is seated from the fixed dates in the ordinance currently to the date that floats with the assessor's hearings, and to correct the ordinance with respect to the fee charged for land use revalidation to be $10 per parcel per year, which is $60.
I wonder if there was any reason it was attached to those dates originally. That's the only thing I wonder. You know, it's, there are certain times of the year that are harder for people to, you know, transact business than others.
I think it was related to this, when the cycle occurred. Ms. Graham went out and looked at several other localities. It was, these, August 28th is very late compared to other localities. My original proposal to her was 45 days, and she suggested 60 days, just because that time of year, you could be getting into weather issues, and that would push you out, you know, further and likely to the springtime, or early, early spring.
I have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
I have a second. Parrish and Smith.
Oh, I see. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Sorry to spring that last part on you at the last minute.
It was real, it was important. A wise one to spring.
That's, that's a good point.
Building Committee Charter.
Does the Rules Committee or the Building Committee rep wants to?
Well, I, I'll take a stab at first, I guess, with the Building Committee, but this is something that has been discussed both at the Building Committee and then the Rules Committee. I believe we've worked on it a couple of times. But what we have is a situation where if the County Administrator is a, an appointed member, then the same two members of the Board of Supervisors cannot discuss anything with them, whether we're, unless we're in a called meeting of the Building Committee. So we run up on the same problem with, with Mr. Jenkins as the Director of Maintenance. So we, the board basically accepted his resignation, and he attends many, if not all, the meetings as a advisor or whatever, and we would, we would be looking to do the same with the County Administrator in this position. He would be a very essential individual that would attend the meetings, but he wouldn't be an official, officially appointed member. And then the, the makeup of the body would then, well, we, we now have five members with the County Administrator, but if we were to restructure the Charter, then we would be back to four, which we could appoint one or more members after that.
This seems logical.
It just makes it very simple, and with that, I would put this in the form of a, of a motion, if you need a motion and a second for a discussion.
I'll, I'll second, and my only question was in the, I'll second your motion. My question was in the, toward the end of the Charter, which is short and sweet, and appreciate the work that went into it. There's, I just want to understand, sorry, I had it open. The last line, I just want to understand what it, what it means. Give me one second here. Well, not the last line. Second to last line, "When appropriate," this is under the third bullet point, "when appropriate, the committee may help draft statements of work, review proposals, make source selection recommendations, and review performance." Is there a performance review of, of what? Review what performance? That was my question.
That, that would be like the.
Contractors or?
Well, right, contractors on, on the work that's ongoing.
Uh huh. Okay.
My only question, and this was done in 2018, is there a reason we need two board members on this committee?
I don't know that we need two board members, but I think it's a, it's an active concern.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of attention currently, and I think it benefits from having two board members on there.
Yeah.
It's a small committee. If we didn't have a board member, it would be a committee of three.
Yeah, we need.
So I, I, I think it, we have two board members, and appropriately so, because it's, it needs a lot of attention.
I will note that the first call that identifies that the, the committee should be a membership minimum of four, with the idea that a FOIA, FOIA would be, quorum would be three, so two could get together and talk about things that needed. But if there are times when there are a lot of projects going on, which may be coming up, the Board of Supervisors could expand this committee to more members at, at that time. But it should be, be a minimum of four.
Right. If, if we had something that was, someone took a special interest in and only wanted to serve in relationship to that task, you know, we could certainly accommodate folks that were only on board for very specific reasons. So, you know, we tried to build it with a lot of flexibility, and it passed muster at both the Building Committee and the Rules Committee.
If we make it any smaller, even for a short time, make it three, then nobody can talk to anybody outside of a called meeting.
I just didn't know if you needed somebody expertise-wise that could be added, but you've already got four, so two of you, I guess, are.
What's the, is, is there an outside limit on the number of members of the Building Committee? Is that?
No.
No.
We, we just have a minimum. I mean, anybody can, they're public meetings, so anyone can attend that would, would have an interest or, or, you know, comments to make.
Yeah, I've thought, I've said before, it'd be neat to, not neat, it'd be important if, if the person was willing, someone with historic building restoration experience, is a county resident. I've got a couple of people in mind along those lines, just, everyone's busy, but if there's room for them or just to attend, we certainly want to encourage that.
I would say that if you find somebody of that, then the board could appoint them, and it'll be five or six or seven.
Okay. Great. Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
ARPA.
I included this back on the agenda, just in case the board wanted to have more discussion about it right now. The various trade organizations, VACO, VML, they're starting to dig into the details. The interim final rule is not a final, final rule yet, and there are many people commenting on different aspects of that, whether it be the speed of broadband that would apply or not in some different areas. I'm not advocating any action right now. In speaking with the chair earlier, she thought at some point in time, it'd make sense, it would make sense probably to have a separate meeting, like the board had before about CARES, to really dig into this item. But I wanted to have it here and available if board members had any particular questions right now.
I mean, I think we need to address an expense that we incurred last month with funding the additional employee of Chester Gap. That was an additional expense that we, expense we've now incurred, and we had no discussion about how to fund that. So is that something we can fund out of this ARC?
I believe you can. More flexible, of course, is, is the cash the board has on hand and freed up from the CARES Act. And selfishly, I would, there's been no expenses up through June 30th, which makes one report very, very easy. And if there are no expenses through to September 30th, that'll make this first annual report very, very easy. But then said, these dollars are available for the board to apply, and they must be obligated by December 31st, 2024, and then actually spent by December 31st, 2026. So we, we don't want to wait till the last minute, but you do have a lot of time to really think about how best to allocate these dollars. And as you'll see in your Treasurer's Report later, there is plenty of cash on hand that was freed up from CARES Act and a few other things that you could apply through an appropriation, and I assume that appropriation would happen at a subsequent meeting during the appropriation section. I've not been directed to take any action on that at this point, but certainly welcome any direction.
And I think the other thing that I've heard about in Sperryville is, you know, obviously with the Fourth of July, just having come and gone, the fire department lost out on another year of revenue from their fireworks event. Is that something that would qualify?
I, my preliminary review on that is that it is, it would not necessarily, although I'd have to look more carefully at it. On those fringe-type things, if the board is, is of a mind to provide funding to the fire companies for that business interruption, that you do it out of that more flexible bucket to be 100% sure that it's acceptable.
So I was thinking, a conversation maybe in September, after your year, when's the year report?
September, expenses through September 30th.
September 30th, so.
So it could be that, yes, they have a history of parade or fireworks, and they have a history of getting that money annually, but it could also be that another fire department had, had intended to start something like that and couldn't do that. So would they also be eligible for money that they didn't get to do what they had intended to do? I mean.
We required information from them for CARES Act to justify their past revenues and expenditures to show the net revenue that they typically received but didn't in order to have justification for the state. We are going through an audit process right now with the state. So I think it'd probably be problematic to guess that a company was going to start one and doesn't have any records to show that they used to do that.
But if they were.
Now, if you're going to use it out of your local, you can do whatever you want.
If there were infrastructure expenses, what, associated with the companies?
It has to be, it's very narrowly construed to water, sewer, and broadband, and sewer has been, the guidelines have identified that sewer does include storm sewer, but that is very tight.
Mm-hmm.
So what did I just say?
Sewer and what? What are the other two?
Water, sewer, and broadband, infrastructure, that they're explicitly permitted, and sewer has been deemed to include stormwater, storm sewer.
All right.
Now, there are the other categories of public health and various other things, probably would allow active expenditures for companies, but they would have, we would have to very clearly draw the line to them being. draw the line to them being related to COVID, which the further away we get from the most pronounced impacts of COVID, the harder it is going to be to draw that line, as far as increased staffing or something like that.
Just to move this along, I did think that, I believe it was Ms. Smith's idea at the time, it was a good one, to convene a special meeting that I think gave the public fair notice that we were looking at this revenue and how to spend it, and we did that on a standalone basis one evening at the school, and I thought that worked really well. We did it twice, actually, because we had two tranches of funding. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we set a date and time certain for a meeting to discuss expenditures of the American Rescue Plan Act CSLF RF funds that we are, we have received. And I note that the first applicable reporting deadline would be September 30th, I believe, of 2021. So I think if we are going to have any movement in terms of expenditures, we should meet sooner rather than later, in advance of that reporting date.
Yeah, if you have no expenditures before September 30, 2021, it just makes reporting very easy.
Yeah, but, I mean...
You could have a meeting in August or November, September.
Yeah, we have a 2024 deadline, which is, I think...
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a little less pressure than last time.
Yeah.
But we're already, we're already well into 2021, so I think we should, we should start talking. And obviously, this dovetails with a lot of different discussion about broadband and other initiatives, and frankly, water and sewer and stormwater mitigation, as Ms. Smith pointed out earlier. I mean, there's a lot to talk about and a lot to think through, how we spend this wisely. So I don't know if we, if my motion has to include a time and date certain, but it seems like it should, so maybe...
I suppose you could authorize the chair to pull the board, to find a date within a range, a month in September, or...
I would say within the month of August.
That was a motion, I assume?
It is. So it would be for board discussion and public comment on possible expenditures related to this funding.
I would second, and for purposes of discussion, just add that it's also my recollection that we had a system for reaching out to folks that may help us put together recommendations or things that might fit in the puzzle for how to expend these funds. And, you know, I would hope that we would undertake that as well in advance of the meeting, and with that in mind, it might be better. And also, I'm thinking about some of the broadband deadlines we have for September, that August and September may be very busy, and it may make sense, if Gary is not of a mind to file anything at the end of September anyway, to maybe devote the October board supervisors' meeting in the evening to a meeting at the high school that would address folks that may be interested in receiving those funds.
The board may want to take action to allocate or obligate a certain portion of these funds for broadband, for example.
Right.
And the broadband authority may want to or need to know that in advance of completing body application.
Okay.
So I would think that that order of operations may be important. I don't know if there is a mind to use any of this money for broadband, but if there is, certainly eligible, that would probably be important in a body application.
Okay, so sooner rather than later.
Are we earning any money on this money?
Oh, of course, but not a whole lot.
Okay.
A very low one, usually.
Not, not 4%.
No.
Of course, we're constrained by state law and how our dollars are invested.
Okay.
They're just down the street here, whoever the bank is now lending them to, to make money themselves.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for a meeting to discuss with the board and the public in the month of August.
I'll amend that, move that we meet in the month of October, 2021. Oh, you, but yours, Gary's, I'm sorry. I'm trying, I'm trying to keep up.
I'm fine with it the way it is.
Okay. And I'm fine with it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks.
Reconsideration of local declaration of emergency.
Oh, you skipped over a really important, fun topic.
It's because my highlight went out.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I think you added this. Public safety committee meeting regarding CenturyLink landline telegraph. I guess I'll defer to the public safety committee. Wow. Board members are no longer chair, so if you'd like, I can take the lead, or you can take the lead.
And I'll just knock my head against the table, because I seem to be living this issue every day.
I guess at the public safety committee, this was brought up, and we've heard complaints about it before, but it seems like CenturyLink is starting to fall behind on their commitment to address landline service complaints.
Yeah.
And I think that perhaps this board ought to, you know, step up, send the letter again, or make, you know, our contacts know that we had developed during the last year or two that we had problems with them, and let them know that it's starting to happen again, it's escalating.
Yeah, and if I could just add some color here, no, this is not an exaggeration. For the last, I would say, 10 weeks, I have been working with a new technical person with a company called Lumen, who oversees for, on CenturyLink's behalf, our area, and he has been very responsive, but he cannot work with, at least in Harris Hollow, with, he cannot work effectively with the infrastructure that is in Harris Hollow. Even today, I still have one constituent who has not had his phone working for two months. And during that period, there have been other citizens who have had phone service and not had phone service, had it back, lost it, and had it back again. So from a service standpoint, I've been very pleased with Mr. Illicit's responsiveness and dispatching technicians who are sitting there out in the field splicing wires together. It's not work I would want to do, but they are really trying hard. And so, one, one thing I just put out there for the board to think about, and I have just anecdotally tried to get from other people around the county some sense of whether they're having similar problems, and I'm beginning to get the feeling that Harris Hollow is worse than any place. And to that end, in one of my phone conversations with Mr. Illicit from Lumen, he mentioned, and I only have a vague outline of what this might look like in real-world terms, but he mentioned funding sources that are out there that would help CenturyLink upgrade the infrastructure in Harris Hollow. And it is, it is a public safety issue, and I'm glad you brought it up in that context, because I have at least two constituents who have been hospitalized recently, who came home from the hospital, picked up their phone and had no phone service, and in both cases had either no internet service or no reliable internet service and no cell phone service. So what does a person in that situation do if they fall ill again? And that is unacceptable. So if it is okay with you all, I would like to work with Mr. Illicit and Mr. Curry to at least try to outline for the board to think about how we could bring some funds to bear. I'm not talking about general fund money, I'm talking about creatively going out there and trying to find some public dollars available generally for this type of infrastructure improvement, and see if we can't fix this, it is out of control.
Do you need a, you think a board vote, that the board is behind this matter 100%?
Yeah, and the reason I'm sensitive to that is because I recognize that I live, I live in Harris Hollow, but again, I have gotten the sense, and I'm sure there are other people in the county who have CenturyLink service who are having similar challenges. So I don't want to limit it to Harris Hollow, but I know that there is an acute problem, and this gentleman has indicated to me that there is no doubt there is an acute problem in our hollow with all the infrastructure there. So I'd like to at least start there, and hopefully in the process perhaps discover that we have more funds available that could be used elsewhere in the county. But we need to start somewhere, because we're talking, I believe, copper lines that are 50 years old. So lightning, rain, sun, fog, you name it, they're all contributing factors to unreliable service, so.
I'm not trying to be, it's not funny, but I mean, back when, when the board first, you know, grabbed hold of this issue at, I guess, two years ago, Verizon was also a problem, and where I lived, every time it rained, people on Beattie Town Road lost their phone.
Right.
People over on, was it Horton Hollow Road, lost their phone, people all over the county were losing phone service.
Yeah.
And I'm, I've been fortunate that at least it paid off for our section of Verizon. But if you're having trouble, I think the board needs to get behind it.
Yeah, so I'll do the groundwork, and Mr. Illicit seems to have a good sense of where those dollars might be found. So if you're okay with it, it'd be great if you go ahead and make a motion in that form.
I make a motion the board supervisors would lend its support, at least some sort of vote of support that we are behind getting this problem cleared up with phone service in Harris Hollow with CenturyLink.
And I think you, you had started on the State Corporation Commission.
Oh, yeah.
And so I don't want to, I think that's important to...
Sending the letters again to the State Corporation Commission and to our elected representatives at the state level, both Senator Obenshane and Delegate Weber.
I'll draft that letter, Mr. Fraser, since I'm so fired up about it.
Regarding the SEC, it's difficult to send them a letter, but it's pretty easy to fill out their online system. So if you grant me that flex, us that flexibility, it would be...
I would grant, I would hope that the board would grant the flexibility that the county administrator needs to get that taken care of.
And I'll second that motion. And I would just say that I don't think there should be any concern over you being a resident of that road. This is an historic problem.
Yeah.
It's been going on for a number of years, you know, before you were on the board, and it's well documented, and unfortunately, it's gotten worse.
Yeah.
Very recently gotten worse.
Yeah.
Our success with this has always been about getting in contact with the right humans in these corporations, and we went through a cycle where there was a lot of transition in CenturyLink, and it looks like maybe now this new contact may be...
Yeah, he's been excellent, and really, it's clear to me that service is no longer a problem, it's infrastructure, so.
We have a motion and a second. I'm, just for discussion purposes, I know Bean Hollow had a horrible time with a wire that was pulled over a rock wall near a sheet stand or whatever, and I don't know if that one ever got completed. I know Lauren has been extremely helpful every time I call and let her know about a CenturyLink issue in my district. So I just want to make sure, I am under the opinion, and it could just be me, but I think people have gotten so fed up that they've stopped calling.
Well, and I've learned that on my road, I mean, this constituent's been out for two months. He was added to the queue, at least for me to address, only in the last week. And that's one thing I'll just state publicly, I've told my constituents, as soon as you're, as soon as you find you have a phone problem, contact me. Obviously, they can't call me, but I said, come up my driveway, send me an email, find a payphone, I don't know, call me, or let me know, because I think it has been very effective to just go straight to CenturyLink and say, totally unacceptable, yeah, people have been in the hospital, they can't call 911, fix it, and they do. And then it's off again two days later.
You're right about the weather.
Bean Hollow, I do, that splits the districts that we represent, and I did talk to constituent in the Hampton District side of Bean Hollow yesterday, said everything's been fine since that fix.
Good. Excellent. All right.
And the consensus was too, at the public safety committee, that Verizon had been doing much better.
Yeah, yes, and we just had a situation come up where the citizens were very frustrated, grouped together with their calls just being dropped after a short period of time, and of course, they didn't know to help have the administration help advocate on their behalf. Lauren reached out to her contact, they had somebody go out, they found out it was an issue in the switching station, switch them to a different part of the infrastructure, and everything's fine. So part of this is always getting that word out, that we are here to help advocate on your behalf. We can't fix the wires, but we can advocate on your behalf.
Yeah.
To a real human rather than some call center.
All right, we have a motion and a second. If we're done with discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for taking the lead on that, Mr. Whitson.
Sure, thank you all.
Now, reconsideration of local declaration of emergency.
This topic has come up a couple of times, and I guess you'd say I tried to drag my feet a little bit, to delay, to make sure we were in position where I thought it was appropriate to end the local declaration. As you're aware, the state has taken action to end their declaration. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to take action locally to end ours, but I think it is appropriate. The declaration was entered, I guess, by me as the director of emergency management, and then ratified by the board supervisors, as required by the Code of Virginia. To end it, then you need to take a similar action by resolution. I've prepared such a resolution that's included in the packet that has many of the same recitations as were used to enter the local declaration, and adds one more that states that the Code of Virginia, Section 44, 14621, states that governing body, when in its judgment all emergency actions have been taken, shall take appropriate action to end the declared emergency. And then states that it's resolved that you do in fact take that action. So that resolution is available for the board to act on if so desired.
I'd make a motion, will you adopt, that we adopt the resolution to end the declaration of local emergency for the COVID-19 virus as presented.
I'll second, with an amen.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Being a resolution will be roll call.
Hearing none. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. All right, broadband authority administration funding. As a, I tried to make it clear as to how this came about in the action discussion information on board docs, and based on what I believe we will run into with, and the authority hopefully will agree with this as well, with needing some help on grant writing, minutes taking, I can tell you, Miss Bond would much rather be on the technical side than on the minute side. Support for whatever partner we end up choosing at the authority level, there's just a need for some money in the bank to help us out when something comes about. And if nothing comes about, then we can obviously hold it for a future vatty grant.
By we, you mean the broadband authority.
Correct. If the, if the board supervisors agrees on this.
Thank you, Ms.
And Mr. Summers had set up the phone conversation Zoom with Andy Johnston of PATH, and PATH is very interested in helping us, and I think if the authority chooses a partner and there's more to come, there may be more to come from PATH as well, but they wanted to help us at this point get started with some funding. And Mr. Summers has an anonymous donor that also said if the board wants to put up the $50,000, be it from CARES or the ARPA, if that's even available, I'm not even sure in this one, and match what PATH has put up and what the anonymous donor has put up, then we can put that money in the bank and use it when approved.
The broadband authority.
The broadband authority.
It'd be in the broadband authority's bank account, not the board supervisor's bank account.
Thank you.
Which bank account the broadband authority authorized to be opened.
Correct.
I just, I just want to say that I think this conversation, Mr. Curry, you've kind of hit on what I, I guess, have misgivings about, is I'm sitting here as a board of supervisors member that's redundant to the broadband authority, and I'm a process person, and I kind of feel like I should have been able to render an opinion on this as a broadband and I kind of feel like I should have been able to render an opinion on this as a broadband authority member before it came up to the board of supervisors. And I don't know in which role I'm speaking. And if I'm speaking as a broadband authority member, we have a problem because this is not a called meeting of the broadband authority.
Correct.
I would, the, the only action before the board of supervisors today is whether the board of supervisors would like to allocate $50,000 of board, board of supervisors controlled money to the broadband authority. And if the board of supervisors does that, the PATH Foundation and anonymous donor have indicated that they will likewise provide $50,000 to the broadband authority. How those $150,000 are used would be completely up to the broadband authority. If the board of supervisors wanted to put strings on how the $50,000 is used so the broadband authority doesn't use it in an incorrect way, you, I suppose you could do that.
If I could weigh in myself, this becomes further complicated by the fact that neither you nor Ms. Donahue in any chair capacity was actually authorized by either one of those bodies to, to pursue this. I mean, we just had a vote 10 minutes ago to authorize one of our members to write a letter and for the board to be behind something to that, that magnitude. But here we are. Now it's something that our board chair and our county administrator have been working on that I didn't know about until we saw your, I guess it was June 28th, we saw what, you know, you had been working on this on June 23rd in your, your county administrator update. So I, I'm kind of at a loss as to how this is, is playing out, Ms. Donahue. This is not, this is not the first time this has happened. I mean, we're all members. We all have the same level of authority. And you wouldn't, I don't think anyone would like it if I just went down there and started talking to somebody. And they would wonder who I'm representing if I did. So I guess as chair, you went and presented yourself as representing one or more of the authorities or the board of supervisors, but actually you didn't have the authority to.
So.
Find out about it after the fact.
Ron, she's got the authority to put it on the agenda and.
Chris, we all have that same authority.
I'm just.
That, that's no more authority than you have or I have.
And you or I could have done the same thing. The question is, do we approve the idea or do we not approve the idea?
No, 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 no. You're stepping ahead. The situation, my, I'm being blown, blown right past here. The problem is, this is a five-member body, either one of the boards.
Right. We have a vote and we can vote on this now.
You see, you're still trying to make light of it. The problem is, we didn't know about it until it shows up on the agenda.
Didn't know about it either. I didn't know about it either. I'm willing to vote on it according to how, how I think.
So if I go off and do something next week, you're going to support that next month?
Support. I'm not supporting anything. I hadn't voted yet. I'm, I'm waiting.
No, but that's what you're, you're, you're getting yourself ready to support something.
No.
So I'm saying, if I went off on my own next month and I, and I talked to somebody, some authority, some board, some, some governmental entity, and I came back and said, here, it's on the, I want you all to vote for it, you wouldn't get a little bit aggravated about that?
It takes a lot more than that to get me aggravated.
This is a five-member body that we're supposed to represent all five districts of the county, and, and it looks like we don't get any information until the last minute.
When is the, um, just trying to find a path forward? What's the date of our next broadband authority meeting?
We have a special work session that I don't think this can be a part of.
Yeah. So that's, that's their next meeting, not your next meeting.
Right.
So I think it's.
That's, that's a special.
We have a special meeting on the 14th.
Okay.
It's best, still day. How could you forget?
So.
We talked about that.
The next official meeting is on the 19th.
The regular, next regular meeting is?
Yep, on the 19th.
And is there, in terms of, I think Ms. Walter made a great point. I mean, or highlighted the fact that there's money there, the PATH Foundation. I'm sensitive to constituents such as one individual who spoke today during the public comment period. I mean, if we can find private money and grant money out there to kind of get the ball rolling as these RFI's come in, let's do it. So I guess my question is just from a timing and time sensitivity standpoint, and just to make sure our colleagues are, feel comfortable with the process as they describe it, could we take this up at the next regular broadband authority meeting? And would that in any way preclude us from getting money that is out there should we decide to match?
I think there's some confusion with who the we's are, but the broadband authority.
Well, I'm clear. I'm, I'm, I'm over that confusion.
It'd be best if we didn't use pronouns and just name the bodies.
Okay. So is there any reason why this, the broadband authority could not take this up at its next regular meeting? And then they're after the board of supervisors, this body then takes this up as an agenda item after it has been fleshed out at the broadband authority? And, and our col, the members of the broadband authority are allowed to weigh in on a path forward?
I don't believe there's a time other than we have VADI and all those goals that we're going to try to meet, and we're going to need to get some help.
So our next regular meeting's in August?
Correct.
So we wouldn't be able to take, the board of supervisors would not be able to take up any, any decision, recommendation, et cetera, from this operate standalone broadband authority until September, if I'm understanding the timing correctly?
We would have a broadband authority meeting on the.
Broadband authority would have a meeting.
Have a meeting on the 19th. That could, this could be on the agenda. We could vote on that agenda item.
Who could?
The broadband authority.
That's on the 19th of?
On the 19th of this July.
July. Okay. So let's.
And then the broadband authority members could technically sign some sort of commitment asking the board of supervisors to approve.
Okay.
And go in that direction.
So, so to remedy the process issue and make sure that our colleagues and those individuals who sit on the broadband authority have all had a chance to weigh in in a sequential way, I would just recommend, and I don't believe it would require a motion, that we move on from this topic.
I, I'd like to see, uh, perhaps some sort of consensus that all members of this body and perhaps the broadband authority would be aware when there are Zoom calls with business that they have to attend to.
Mr. Fraser, I remember something just recently that I had sent out an email asking a question, and you had said that you had already approached the, the conversation and had some work that you were doing efforts on it. If you're asking for all of us to sit.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware what you're talking about. Maybe, maybe I have a short memory on that, but.
It was an email thread. I'm sure I can find it. But I, I definitely understand what you are saying. I just don't think anybody sits at home, I don't believe, and doesn't have a phone call and doesn't get on their computer and doesn't try to help the citizens of this county until they're at a meeting.
I think that that's true, what you're saying, Madam Chairman. But I also think when you're making big moves, like taking a grant from PATH, or when you and Mr. Curry in your role on the broadband authority took a meeting with Chantel before we had a meeting with Chantel as an authority, or the, the authority had a meeting with Chantel, I think it's important that we interact as a full body and not just as individuals with the people that we're doing business with. And I think that's the way you build consensus and make for a successful body, and that everybody feels that they have buy-in and is, is committed to a solution. And so that's why I would ask that we do the work as a body. And, you know, certainly it's appropriate.
Can't say we.
Or that the broadband, that we here on our board do the work as a body, and that also the members of the broadband authority do their work as a body.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, we all want to come out at the same place at the end of the day, whether we're broadband authority members or board of supervisors members. And I just feel strongly about that. And I, I don't mean to be finicky. I think it's a great thing if, if money can be found anytime.
Yep.
But at the end of the day, the process is also important.
All valid points. Yeah.
So this is not an ambush. I mean, this has been on board docs for how many days? Uh, I mean, we're not talking about anything that we already haven't been, had access to.
Chris, I don't think I'm saying this ambush. I'm talking about the fact that it was, it was already done before we knew about it on board docs.
I, I would just say, I, first of all, all valid points from my colleagues. And I would just say that Ms., I'm not going to speak for Ms. Donahue, but she and I are both new, relative, getting less new at this. But sometimes there is, when you feel a sense of urgency, it is easy to take action just to try to make something happen. And clearly, the broadband landscape is moving quickly. And so I would just say thank you to Ms. Donahue for her efforts, and thank you to our colleagues for reminding us that trying to, trying to work as transparently together as possible is always a better approach. So it's, as long as this fast-moving landscape doesn't outrun the broadband authority or this body, and we could take this up, if the broadband authority could take this up at its next regular meeting, and then the board of supervisors could weigh in on this same agenda item in August, it seems like no harm, no foul, and everyone should feel better about the process.
All right. So what I'm hearing is, I will add that, well, me, the broadband authority chair will add that agenda item for a discussion and a vote at the 19th meeting. And then based on that, will decide if they want to send a recommendation or a letter to the board of supervisors for a vote in August.
They can, they, probably can throw it to whatever they want to do at their meeting. It's not, this isn't their meeting.
I would just make a motion that we send this down to the broadband authority for consideration at their next regularly scheduled meeting.
Sounds good. I'll second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
So I, I thought we had a broadband work session on the 14th.
We do have a work session, but.
So that, but this is, then we have another one on the 19th.
19th.
And this is going to go to the 19th.
Correct. That's our normally scheduled, that's the authorities' normally scheduled meeting. Uh, recognition of citizens serving on board-appointed groups.
Yes, I, I added this to the agenda because from time to time, I received suggestions from board members that certain members that have been appointed to various bodies be recognized for their service upon completion. In my last locality, we had a policy that structured how this would be done. So it was fairly made it out. Thrown that policy into board docs as a starting point for the board if you want to have such a policy. You certainly don't have to and can take matters up in a one-off way, but it would seem that the board may have to take action, decide which point to, to recognize at a future meeting and then recognize them. Whereas this, you could identify how pointees will be recognized going forward, and that could just come to the board as deemed appropriate. You did hear from one citizen about this during public comment on the content of the draft that is provided.
Yeah. While we're there with that, if I could, are the appointments to the Community Services Board, are they three or four years?
I don't recall.
Yeah, that's, that's my problem. I'm thinking that they're three-year terms.
Community Services Board, do you, I don't know what the length of term is.
Could we just maybe say after the completion of one term of continuous service?
The board can make the words whatever you want.
Well, I, I don't, I don't even know if we want that. Maybe just say at the completion of, um.
I mean, you could have a resolution for every single person that served, even if it was for a day.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem reasonable. And it probably also isn't reasonable to wait for somebody who has 20 years of service. So I, it's, it's continuum, and this policy tries to identify that everybody should be recognized by their chairperson and the county administrator. And then as, as their service lengthens, they should have more recognition.
How about something to the effect of, at the completion of their term of service? Because, I mean, obviously, if a medical problem arises and they can only serve three or four years, three of a four-year term, I, I think that would deserve recognition as well. So.
I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, at, at the completion of their term of service.
I, I just have to say, I don't really think we need this policy. We struggle to find volunteers. It's not like we have too many people that we need to recognize. I think we have in our comprehensive plan that we are to encourage a spirit of volunteerism. And really, what's the cost of recognizing our volunteers? It's a little time in a meeting. It's a piece of paper and a frame. We ought to give it away like it's free because frankly, it is. And I, I really thought this policy was incredibly stingy. And I think we ought to thank everybody, everybody, every chance we get. And, sorry, I didn't mean to feel so strongly about that, but I, I just don't know why we would seem to codify something that really we should be doing all the time.
I think the consistency is what I struggle with and what recognition should happen at the board or committee level versus the board of supervisor level. Because I don't think you want to get into the, or maybe we do, the everybody gets a trophy kind of feeling. So it, the, the appreciation of the recognition isn't necessarily the same.
Well, I would just say, somebody could serve for two years and do some really great work, and somebody could be on there for 10 years and just show up at the meetings. How do you quantify that? How do you reward that differently?
I don't think that the volunteers are doing this for recognition. I mean, they're doing it because they want to do it. And I'm not even sure we need to worry about this. So they're, they're doing it, you know, for the satisfaction of, of helping. And that's probably enough right there.
I think that's true, probably, Mr. Parrish. But I'd only say that that makes it even more so that the right thing to do is recognize them for their service when their service is concluded.
Their term of service.
So just, do you want to just move on?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, let's think about this. I mean, when you say recognition, I mean, does that mean a frame and a piece of paper that, I mean, there, or it's funny, I was looking through the garage the other day, and I saw a bunch of those that I have from different things in the county.
They should be on the wall.
Really. So it just seems like some time and effort and factor.
Maybe we can just talk to the, the chairs of the committees and boards that we're on and, and see what their feeling is as far as their recognition versus when they should or would be interested in asking the board to make the recognition of higher level at our level.
So absent anything else, items end up on your agenda when requested by a board member. Presumably, if a board member asks for an individual to be recognized by resolution, then staff will have to do the legwork to draft a resolution and put it on the agenda. And that's, I understand how the board will want to move forward in the interim, just as individuals are identified by an individual board member. That's how you want to proceed. And that's fine. If the board wants to give everybody a resolution, that's fine too. But there should be some action or something to guide staff to that end.
So let's think about it and talk about it later.
Okay.
It's okay by me.
I think it would be great if we could recognize the broadband committee members, the original broadband committee members, or those that maybe haven't been recognized previously. We discussed that when we dispersed the broadband committee, and it was never brought back up again. But many of those folks were on for five years.
Yeah.
Our founding members.
Yeah.
And we've never brought them in and given them any kind of recognition.
Yeah, I think they're underappreciated because I, I kind of resent the fact that several people got up and said they didn't do anything, didn't get anywhere, when actually they got to the point where the county had to commit money, which the county wasn't willing to do at that time. And they, they did what they could do.
They did what they could do within those constraints of the city. And I think we all understand that.
Yep. I agree. They should all be recognized.
They, they positioned the authority to where we could succeed, and, and we needed to form the authority basically to turn on the stick for money.
No, you're right. They should all be recognized. So let's talk about that when we bring it back up. So let's talk about that when we bring it back up.
Okay.
All right, permitting fee schedules.
County ordinance identifies in several locations that your fee schedules are adopted outside of the ordinance by resolution. This was done in 2017 for both the building and erosion fees, as well as the zoning fees. The, Ms. Summers has reviewed the zoning fees and has made recommendations for some fee increases, and those are identified on the attachment, identified as proposed zoning fee schedule. I'll say, at the same time, the building and E and S permit fees, the board reviewed them during the budget process, and I think came to the conclusion that they were fine, and Mr. Cornell did not think any needed to change. To try to keep things straight and easy to track down, my recommendation that the board go ahead and adopt by resolution both, even if you make no changes today, just to make it easy to follow. But for the zoning fees, you can see on the attachment, the second page identifies the change in recommended fee. They're largely recommended to increase due to the cost of advertising, which for the most case, for special use permits, special exceptions, rezonings, et cetera, involve notices in the newspaper, both for the planning commission and then either the board or the BCA. And so that's four separate notices in most cases. And you can see the average costs that we've seen based on the typically, typical length of the ad. And then also, for just regular zoning permits, administrative zoning permits, recommendation to increase to 50 to 100. And you can see what our neighbors are charging for those, to range from 50 to 200. Certainly welcome any questions. The board can choose to make these changes, not make these changes. And you don't technically have to take any action to adopt these fees by resolution today, because it was done in 2017. It just helps us ensure that the latest fees are in fact, were in fact, adopted by the board.
Mr. Curry, you have presented a draft resolution. And is there any reason why we would not want to go ahead and, and move to adopt that resolution, referencing the fee schedules?
Only if you didn't...
Showed in Chapter 103, Article 2.
Only if the, the fees didn't meet your expectations.
Okay. I would go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution presented references the fee schedule shown in Rapid County Code, Chapter 103, Article 2.
They don't have to be advertised?
Uh, no, it's not in ordinance. This is just set by resolution of the board. And several places in your ordinance identify that the fees are set by resolution. Whereas if they were in the ordinance, then you'd have to go through an ordinance amendment each time.
Sorry, was that a motion, Mr. Whitson?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll call for a resolution.
Oops, sorry, you are correct. Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. All right. Information, reports and correspondence, board committee reports.
I'll jump in on the planning commission, since that's going to be front and center this evening. So we had our, our regular meeting earlier in the, what month are we in now? June, our regular meeting in June, so the, it was quite a lengthy meeting. The, there's a nano brewery application, which will come before the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approvals, a special exception permit application to a brewery in a highway commercial zone. And the planning commission placed on that application, I think, a fairly healthy and well-reasoned list of conditions. So we will, Mr. Curry, I don't recall when we'll see that. Will we see that in August?
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, you're all probably aware that Dowling, the owner of the Blue Rock property, had come in with a fairly extensive special exception permit application, which was withdrawn just on the eve of the planning commission meeting. And, uh, you know, the background there is, I think, that it drawn a lot of attention and concern. Separate from that, of course, we'll have to take up, again, I'm sure, at a later date, the condition placed on the dwelling for which he is seeking a special use permit to operate it as a tourist home. And that's also for us to consider, as you all know. That's a, there's a condition on the, the overarching special exception permit. So I'm sure we'll hear about that later. And then tonight, we'll be talking about the, the short towers, public safety slash broadband, and renewable energy. And that will be a joint meeting with the planning commission and with public hearings for each. And we considered a re-subdivision of the subdivided Loudon Chester Gap that got quite complicated quite quickly, so that one was tabled for a later date. And then, I was out of town, but the other members of planning commission did meet in a special work session on the renewable energy front. So I'm sure we'll hear from the planning commission members tonight about what they've learned. But I think the idea was that that renewable energy ordinance is complicated, and in it is embedded, embedded a lot of detail. So it was an effort just to really get their heads around what's in there and what else might be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to, oh, sorry, building, yep, building, you want to do building?
Oh, sorry, building committee. We met this month and, and went over the, uh, we didn't have any updates from, uh, Mr. Ryland, really, to speak of, because the board had just approved the, uh, the brick and mortar part of the detailed analysis. And so, so no work had, had, had been started on that. And we were told that the, you know, the roof process had been underway, and we're waiting for the report back from, I think it's Milner? No, Milner is the brick and mortar.
RCS.
I'm sorry?
RCS.
Yeah, R, RPS, right, the roofs. Anyway, so all that's in the process, and we, we were getting an update on some of the other work that had been done or was planned. And one of them is, I think, the painting of this building, but that's not going to start until, I think, after the hot weather is behind us. And we discussed the building committee charter again, and that was pretty much it. But that was, I think, the Thursday meeting. And the following Monday, which is, um, what date was that?
It was around the 21st, maybe?
No, the 21st.
Monday after Father's Day.
Yep, Monday after the holidays. Ms. Smith and myself, as members of the committee, met with the constitutional officers here at the courthouse grounds. And because of the interconnection between a couple of different committees that we are on with, uh, the sheriff, we kind of split off so that we didn't make a improper meeting of one committee or the other, and went over the work that we have planned for the courthouse, the dependencies that each one of the constitutional officers are in, and discussed, you know, the potential or possible new courthouse building behind here. So we had a, a good discussion, and I think bringing the constitutional officers into the loop was very productive. And I think perhaps we ought to do it again. We offered to make one or more of them members of the committee, if the board approved that, but then that would create the same problem we have with the county administrator. Then we wouldn't be able to, to actually discuss things unless we had a call meeting. So that's probably not going to be recommended.
But we made it clear that they have an open invitation at any time to the building committee meetings.
Which, whichever board members.
Should they bring anything to us?
So I, I think it was all, is all very productive. That was probably more productive than anything we've done recently.
Excellent.
And I guess while we're there, you can just jump over Rules Committee. We didn't meet. The Public Safety Committee, I'll go ahead while I'm, I'm there, if we would. So we, we had our quarterly meeting this past week, and then that's when we brought up the discussion of the telephone system having problems with CenturyLink. We discussed several things. It was a very good meeting, also very productive, I believe. But we discussed the, uh, the public radio system, uh, went over the, um...
Dues.
The, uh, yeah, the, the due, the first due and all that. I think they're going on out to like 12th due. But we had a, a member of the public who works in GIS Department in Falkir, she's been working with the, the chiefs and I think the people in dispatching. And they're, they're coming out with a pretty good map. As we know, there's, there's a lot of problems with the, the one system that we have, and they're trying to do the best to fill the gap. It looks like Falkir is possibly going to lend us some support there. So again, another very productive meeting, and maybe we'll be taking care of some of these problems that we have with both dispatching and the, you know, ongoing problems with who's supposed to show up where with what. That's, uh, very critical.
And I, I think that we can look forward to as a board, a discussion of the dues and a, a resolution to the map, so we can all review that as a board, too, probably next month or September after it's made its way through the chiefs, and everybody's agreed on it. So we can look forward to that. I would say there was also a lot of frustration at that meeting about the lack of implementation of a central response for, um, at Company One, as we voted as a board back in January to implement. Nobody begrudges Chester Gap their solution, but I think there's a consensus that, you know, that solution made its way through all the appropriate bodies. It made its way through the chiefs, it's made its way through the association, the Public Safety Committee, and the Board of Supervisors, and it did all that in very short order. So why is, why is that solution not in place yet? And I really think there needs to be a lot of urgency to getting that solution in place.
All right.
And it would be remiss of me not to echo those sentiments, and I share them.
All right, thank you for the updates.
Are, are we going to get an update on the implementation of, uh, help at Company One?
I would think, is that something that Mr. Polster is working on, or?
He is working on it. I can tell you that that's his top priority. He's doing a lot of work in that area, talking to all the chiefs. He's analyzing the vehicle situation, of which it appears we have adequate vehicles in our current fleet to repurpose. And he is reviewing the qualifications that would be appropriate for the people to serve that role. Not any paramedic would be appropriate, given that they may be forced to be with patient for a long period of time without ambulance support. So it takes a particular set of qualifications to have the right capabilities, as well as the right mindset relative to the volunteer system. So he's working through all that right now and formulating a, a plan to move forward, which the board will have an opportunity to review and approve.
Um, Ms. Smith, and one very small, very small update that just, um, to give you from this morning. So the town attorney informed me that as part of the post office and the Rush River Commons infrastructure build-out, that they will stub, if Company One wishes to tie into the sewer, they will stub out a sewer hookup if there's, if there are 24/7 folks housed there.
That's great news.
Yeah, so it looks like that, at least that little tiny piece of this bigger puzzle would be there to put in place, should it be desired. And I don't, I don't know the, the technical details of how that's going to happen or when it's going to happen, but just to put that out there for everyone to consider. And I think at the appropriate time, I'd be happy with, with my colleagues' approval to, to talk with Company One to see if that's something they want to, they want to pursue. But I, it sounds like the town of Washington is willing to give them a connection, so.
Reparational facilities authority, did we talk through that?
We did meet, and the, with the major item right now is this fence, which the materials should be coming in in the next week or so. So look for work updates on that. Our, our next normally scheduled meeting is tomorrow night, which we have canceled because we didn't have enough hands-on deck to hold a meeting. And frankly, with making appointees, appointments today, and holding a meeting tomorrow, it seemed like a lot to overcome. So we will not meet tomorrow evening.
Good.
Um, so don't, don't show up.
I appreciate, I appreciate the day off. That's why I'm so eager to volunteer, there's no meeting tomorrow.
And then I would just say, if we could also please recen, uh, recognize the folks stepping aside, in particular, Mr. Del Rosso. He's been a wonderful chairman, and really a great leader for that organization, and, and so insightful and even-handed. And his, um, his steady leadership will be sorely missed, and I hope we will celebrate him at our next Board of Supervisors.
And I do want to, I do want to thank Ms. Walsh for her service. She's done yeoman's work in terms of pursuing grant funding and, and doing other real hands-on work for the park. And so I, I do appreciate her contributions to date.
And with regards to the fire levy board, we have a meeting on the 13th that is mostly operational. Mr. Polster has been invited. We've had a resignation that needs to be filled and some procedure work, fire levy board procedures that we want to work on. And they don't have a date yet to review the bills for the companies, but probably looking at after Labor Day for that. All right, um, any other discussion in the reports and correspondence? I think, Mr. Curry, you had mentioned something under treasurer's cash flow.
Uh, just a note that the get cash graph was updated and corrected first thing this morning. And, um...
Cash balance.
Just a note, even though these are June reports, they are not year-end reports. There will be additional revenues and expenditures that will accrue to FY 2021.
I, I do have a couple of questions on the treasurer's reports. First of all, I just have to thank Ms. Nick. I mean, the level of preparation that goes into all of these reports, and they all complement one another very well and give us a great picture of where we stand. Mr. Curry, I don't know if you're in a position to answer these questions, not a big deal. I note that in the cash rec and anciliation worksheet, under fiscal year 2021, I'm just curious if there's a explanation for the reduction in receipts compared to the prior fiscal year through June, June 30? And it's possible, perhaps, there are receipts that have not been recorded, but it's, there's a $600,000 difference, and I, I don't know what...
If I recall correctly, that was your second tranche of CARES Act.
Uh-huh, okay. All right, so that's one question. Bear with me. In the revenue chart, I, our budgeted amount for fiscal year 2021 on real property tax revenue was rounding up $10.7 million, and actual received, um, to date, I think through June 30, is just shy of $10.4 million for a difference of around $300,000. And then, um...
But let's pause there. The, the budget that's listed for revenue is, uh, we budgeted in just the one line of the real estate tax, but we recognize delinquent in that number.
Okay.
So you need to add all the stack of numbers above the, above that for the past years.
That's my mistake.
I believe we just exceeded 100% in that area.
I got you, I got you. So, right, because you're not budgeting for, for past due collections.
Because we actually received, somebody paid their year 2,000 taxes this year.
Yep, yep. And I, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I mean, the cleanup on, on delinquent taxes is just, that effort has been incredible, and I hope the public recognizes the work of the treasurer's office in getting that done. And then I, I believe similarly, it, it should be the same concept on personal property tax revenue, is that correct?
Correct, and last I added those up, we were about $50,000 behind.
Okay. Um, I think that's it, just bear with me.
No, I say we're 50,000 behind on that, but we're hundreds of thousands of dollars ahead on sales tax.
I meant to say, I hope I'm not burying the lead, because that, those numbers are incredible. So, thank you. Yep, nothing further, and again, thank you for... incredible. So, thank you. Yep, nothing further. And again, thank you for these reports.
All right, that brings us to matters presented by the board.
I do want to send my condolences to my constituent, Robert Elcott, whose wife Angie, who played an instrumental role in the administration of the Hearthstone School for decades. She died on June 28, I believe, after a very short battle with cancer. So I send my condolences to Mr. Elcott.
Any other comments?
I would just add that I did check in with BDOT shortly before the public safety committee meeting. And we should have the results of this Sperryville speed study for that two-lane stretch on the entrance to the park within the next week, 10 days, I would, I would say. He said, he said sometime this week, but we should have it very soon. The other thing I keep hearing from folks in regards to a lot of things in this Sperryville area are concerns about growth in general. Rapahannic News, I guess, is doing some articles about growth in this Sperryville area. And it seems to be a common theme in a lot of small towns around the country. And actually, one of the stories on the Today Show this morning was when small towns become boom towns because of the pandemic. And of course, they were looking at Boise, Idaho, which is substantially larger than Sperryville, Virginia, but same idea, different area. And I wonder, as we look at the challenges that these opportunities and growth present to us, if it would behoove us to revisit the hydrological studies that the county undertook previously. I think it was, was it in the late 80s that those studies were done, or the early 90s?
Yeah.
I think we need to dig those up and circulate those amongst the board members, and also contemplate whether it makes sense to go back and undertake a new series of studies. I think that should be a consideration for any permit that comes forward, any application that we, that we bring forward. Impacts on water could be substantial.
Yeah.
And we just don't have a beat on, on, you know, what the threshold is. So if we could dig up those reports and circulate them, that would be great. And, and it may be something that's worthwhile to undertake and review again.
As those various reports have come across my desk, I've added them to the document library and board docs.
Okay.
There are others that you're aware of that aren't there, and it's just a great repository.
Okay, yes, great.
Good, yeah.
All right, moving into the closed meeting regarding county administrator's annual performance evaluation.
I don't mean to monopolize the conversation, but I did have someone bring to my attention, and this was actually not something that happened in Piedmont District, so I, it's always kind of weird to talk about something that didn't happen in my district. But there's been, or there are a lot of conversations about cats in the county. And we seem to have a way to deal with dogs in the county when things come up with dogs, but we don't have equal resources for issues related to cats. And it seems like kind of a silly thing until you have a neighbor that has litter after litter of kittens, or as was reported in a recent story, there was a cat that was, it was actually in your district, Ms. Donahue. There was a, a very aggressive cat that frankly, the concern was that it was, it was, that it was rabid. And what are our resources to deal with cats? And I know that sounds like it may be a small thing, but people probably saw the same thing about RAL when RAL was originally taken up. And RAL's an important component of our county now. And we have For the Cats' Sake, which I'm very grateful for, and we have Rat Cats, which is also a great organization. But there doesn't seem to be a complete system with dealing with every situation that may arise. And I don't know that I want to particularly take it up, but I think it's worth talking about as a board.
Thank you for shifting the spotlight from beavers, because I never read any of my, my raising the beaver question.
I will say there are different, there are different legal requirements from the state on what counties must do for dogs versus cats. And if the board would like, Mr. Goff and I can cull that legal information and help the board understand what you have to do.
Yeah.
And then the board can always decide if you want to do more.
I think it would be useful information to have. And really, it's for the health of all the animals in the county, because if you get sick cats, it's going to bleed over into other wildlife as well. We don't want that to happen.
You're a dog person.
I am a dog person. I'm allergic to cats.
So...
But that doesn't mean that I don't love cats, too.
You should state that upfront. You should state that. Full disclosure, come on.
Full disclosure, I don't live on Harris Hollow Road, but I still love cats.
If we can, I'd like to move into the, or the motion to move into closed meeting in accordance with the provided motion and certify the closed meeting upon return to open meeting. Do I have to read that?
There is a motion prepared in the agenda packet that is, can be read by somebody.
Okay. I'll do it. I move that the Rapid County Board of Supervisors conduct a closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. The subject matter of the closed...
Which is 2.2-3711A1.
Oh, thank you. The subject matter of the closed meeting will be county administrator's annual performance review pursuant to section 15 of his employment agreement. This is a roll call vote.
So that's a motion by Ms. Donahue?
I will second it if that's a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Motion, I second.
Yes. Mr. Whitson, roll call vote.
Aye.
Yep. Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also.
Aye.
Yes, please.